So at 7:30 PM, we're going to call this regular meeting of the Rutherford Board of Education to order, and we're going to ask everyone if they could to look at Mr. Hurley's box so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We're going to ask Mr. Kelly to please take role.
Sure, Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Conti?
Here.
Mr. Mazone?
Here.
Dr. Racine?
Here.
Mr. Sprayberry?
Here.
Mrs. Librera?
Here.
Dr. Alati?
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you.
All right, thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside the borough clerk's office, mailed to the Herald, South Bergenite, and the record newspapers, and filed with the borough clerk. The agenda is posted electronically on the Friday before the meeting date on the district's website at www.rutherfordschools.org. Due to the Governor's Executive Order 104 citing the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's recommendation for cancellation or postponement of gatherings of 50 or more people for the upcoming weeks, this regular meeting of the Rutherford Board of Education will be conducted utilizing video conferencing as allowed by the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-6, as amended by PL 2020-C11. Members of the public may participate by logging on to the following website at 7:30 PM, which is listed in the regular meeting agenda that's posted online. A video recording of the video conference meeting will be made available on the district's website, www.rutherfordschools.org, subsequent to the meeting. The video link can be found by opening the Board of Education link and clicking on Public Meetings and then Videos. So Board members will see that in your packet there are meeting minutes for approval of the regular session and executive session of April 27th, 2020. Any questions or comments from Board members about those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly to please enter those into the record. We're very happy to have back our student representative, Bridget Boylan. Welcome, and I'm going to turn it over to you for a student report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It has been a long time since I've had the opportunity to speak to you all, and it is great to talk to you in order to give you a student's perspective on how virtual learning has been going. With the current global situation, my typical report of the school is completely negligible. However, I am here to offer a student's view on how online schooling has been going. It has been impossibly difficult, especially for the seniors, to complete the remainder of senior year outside of Rutherford High School, though we do understand the dangers of going back and why it is necessary that we continue online schooling. Beginning in March, it was a major adjustment for teachers and students transitioning to online schooling, but in my opinion, we have begun to get the hang of it. Initially, it was difficult for the teachers to gauge how much and what kind of work to give, but through communication, we have been able to find a balance that works perfectly. Zoom and Google Classroom have proved to be integral tools to complete school, and Google Classroom is used for attendance and assignments while Zoom is used for interactions between students and teachers. Every teacher has a different style, either relying on Zoom every day, Classroom every day, or a mix of both. Nonetheless, it still has been a difficult journey. It does not seem to have an end in sight, but we are getting through it. May 1st, normally seen as Commitment Day for seniors announcing their future at universities, was a milestone many of us seniors were disappointed that we were unable to celebrate. Guidance Department of Rutherford High School has decided to create a video to celebrate students and their futures, and students have reached towards social media in the absence of the tradition and signing the banner outside the guidance office. Today began the stressful two-week period of AP testing, which has become completely altered as a result of pandemic, and I wish all my fellow students good luck while taking the exams. Personally, I have one exam tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, and an exam a week from tomorrow, and I'm very nervous about what they will entail. I have no doubt that students at Rutherford High School will continue the streak of great scores in the AP exams, and as a district, we will be given the AP District Honor Roll Award again this year. At this time during the school year, we would typically celebrate many events in the district that have been disrupted by the stay-at-home orders. Spirit Week, as well as the Spring Pep Rally and Spring Sports were canceled, which is heartbreaking for many students, especially seniors who are missing their last one. Around this time, we would be honoring juniors who were accepted to the National Honor Society and the Spanish and French Honor Societies, however, these events were postponed until the fall. As a senior, it was extremely difficult receiving the email last week about the changes to the end of the year activities, even though it has been expected for a long time. The senior award breakfast, normally the morning of the prom, has transitioned to a virtual celebration, and the traditional prom is no longer going to occur. The town has decided to celebrate the class of 2020 by lighting the lights at Tryon Field 2020 all over the scoreboard. For me, graduation was the mark, for me, graduation, the mark, or end of the time at Rutherford School District, however, was the hardest piece of information to hear. Although the administration in the town of Rutherford has planned another way to celebrate on June 23rd, it is very saddening to hear that our last moment together as a class will not happen. Moreover, at this time, Governor Murphy has acknowledged that any gatherings are prohibited and go against the stay-at-home order, which at this moment ends in early June. Many parents of seniors and seniors themselves have been discussing alternative ways to celebrate graduation in the case of having a real final experience together as a class. I understand that it's very difficult to find ways to do this following the Governor's constraints, and I appreciate the alternative planning for the graduation ceremony. For many of us, we have had our senior year and graduation as a destination to reach for 12 years, and just like that, it's over. It seems a bit selfish to me to be worried and upset by the events that seem insignificant in the face of the tragedy going on in the world, however, it is still heartbreaking to accept that March 13th was our last day at Rutherford High School as a class. Aside from what we have not been able to do as consequence of the pandemic, I would like to truly thank the teachers for all that they have done for us during this time. If one student is struggling with virtual learning, a teacher is having to do it for 25 students four times a day, and I just wanted to share my appreciation for all that they have done for us. I'm heartbroken that I will not have the chance to say goodbye to some of my favorite teachers who have shaped me over the years and thank them for everything. Although some things I have discussed may seem grim, I am truly grateful for the care that you all here and everyone working for the Rutherford Board of Education has done in the past few months to ensure that every student in the district has the opportunity to receive great education despite what is going around, going on around us. Thank you to everyone here who has worked tirelessly to ensure we will have the ability to get our diplomas in June, and I hope this is not the final time I get to talk to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, honey.
Well said. Beautiful report.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do Board members have any comments or questions or thoughts to share with Bridget?
Just real briefly, I had tears in my eyes when you were saying, and some of it was, I can identify how hard this must be for all of you, but I applaud your efforts, and I'm so glad that you have all tried so hard to do what you've done and keep a smile on your face. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just want to express to you how sorrowful it is that you students have to go through this, you know, but just think, everybody in the whole world is going through the whole thing, every student around, and we've tried to give you the best that we possibly could in the minimal amount of time we had to prepare you, and we know that no matter what, these seniors will be fantastic in whatever they do, because everyone else, you're still going to be better than them. So, you know, I think all the Board members love this school so much, all the kids in it, and I just hope you enjoy your college and good luck, honey. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bridget is going to Wake Forest, correct?
Yes.
And we congratulate her on that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Outstanding university, and, you know, we have, the list of colleges are coming in. We're very proud of all of our students. I know, I will be sharing with the Board probably in June or July, a full list of schools, but we've had some outstanding schools where our students have been accepted or plan to attend, among them Brown University, Fordham, you said Wake Forest, Maryland, Syracuse, there's Boston College, the list goes on and on. So we're very proud of the students and their success, and this is Advanced Placement Testing Week on online, and we wish the seniors who are taking part in that well as also. And Bridget, there are two more meetings before June, and hopefully you'll be able to come to both of them if you choose and keep us updated on what's going on.
Thank you.
Bridget, I don't have much to add. I think everyone, you know, spoke, spoke well about how proud we are of you and the senior class, your perseverance, and, you know, the reality of, you know, all these circumstances, but really just that everyone's continued to put forth their best effort. You've done your, you know, your, your best work, and we're super, you know, proud of all of you and really appreciate having your perspective, which is an important part of the, these Board meetings, you know, hearing your perspective. So I do hope that you come to the next two Board meetings. We missed you at the last couple, but we've gotten our foot under us because this is our third virtual meeting now. So, thank you again, thank you again for everything you contribute to these meetings.
Good luck on those AP tests.
Thank you.
I think they're coming up next week, right?
They started today.
Oh, today. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And I know that we're going to be moving on, and Bridget, you're more than welcome to stay on the Zoom call if you'd like, or if you have other, you know, work or business you need to attend to, that's fine as well. All right, so we're going to move on now to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Alati. Let's start off with a facilities update for the Board and for the public. When the Governor announced that schools were closed, Mr. Kelly sent a letter out to the contractors who are, were ready to start at the end of June at Lincoln, the K Center, and the high school and Union School, telling them that now, since we're not returning, work could begin sooner. We set a date of May 18th as the earliest start date for Lincoln, since the work there does not require asbestos abatement of any kind, and we set a date of May 26th as potential dates for K Center, High School, and Union. The earlier work will hopefully mean that when school reopens in September, the great majority of that, all of the work will be done on time so that we don't have more interference with classes next year. We have heard back from the various contractors that they're eager to get started, and they're going to work to try to hit those dates of the early start. In order to get ready for that, the buildings, principals are working on a way for faculty and students to get their belongings and out of the building, and that's going to happen in all the buildings before the end of June in terms of a staggered return outdoors over a period of days, perhaps a week. We're working out the details now for students to come and get stuff that they left behind in the locker or in their classroom, for teachers to do the same, and also to return things that have to be returned. So for schools that are doing it a little earlier, or sections of schools that are doing it a little earlier due to the anticipated start of construction, building principals will be reaching out to students and parents and teachers about that. For the other schools, you'll be hearing more about that as we get closer to June. There was also two meetings last week with the contractors, well, actually with the project managers and the architects. One was a, a, a planning meeting, a design planning meeting for Pierpont, as the Pierpont bid is getting ready to go out on June 12th, and that meeting was to review one last time the designing structure and the plans before they go out to bid. There was also a meeting for the high school, Morton Avenue Wing, that's not going to go out to bid until later this year towards December, and that meeting was to look at the phasing plan, and the architects and the engineers are presenting an ambitious, but I think a doable, plan of having the interior work, which is a great deal of, even though we're thinking of the facade as being outside, there's the HVAC system, there's the unit vents, there's flooring that has to be removed, there's a lot of interior work that has to get done on approximately 40% of the building. So the interior work would begin and hopefully be finished in the summer of 2021, and the curtain walls outside would get done in the summer of 2022. Like I said, that was a very initial phasing discussion, a phasing plan, as that's not going out to bid until the winter, probably December of this year. At our last meeting, we discussed some of the regulations and, from the arc from the contractor side, that have been imposed because of the various mandates coming from the state and federal government, and we have reached out with our project managers and our construction companies, and all those plans are being developed as part of the daily work schedule that will be at each site, and they've been worked on and are being worked on. Okay? Moving into distance learning, as Bridget said, it's going on, it's, I think it's going on about as well as can be expected. We hear many more positive things than we hear negative about it, but we all, as we said over and over, we know it's hard to replicate, if possible to replicate, what goes on in the buildings for seven hours with teachers and classmates together. But I think the teachers and the students and the parents have all done well in terms of trying to make it work to the best of their ability, and I think Bridget's comments about that speak as well or better than I could about it. We have put together several groups to begin planning. We are planning, as I mentioned, a closeout for students for the end of the year in terms of getting their personal belongings and stuff left behind and returning books and things and technology and all the stuff that needs to get returned at the end of the year. We're in the midst of working on those plans. We are doing a similar plan for the teacher checkout in each building. We have a group working, talking about summer programs. Extended school year for special education students is being worked on now for, in a virtual way, to continue with a distance learning approach, is also being worked on on-site in classrooms if that is allowed. We are being told to plan for virtual instruction, and that's what we're planning for, but also we are, at the same time, simultaneously planning for students in classrooms. Students who attend extended school year at a district, their, their schools are working on similar plans for them. We also are looking at the summer programs, our tuition base that we run in district, and whether it's going to be feasible to run them if we're allowed to, and whether or not we would be allowed to. Right now, it looks like we're not going to be able to run those programs, however, we are not ready yet to make that final decision, as this is a constantly evolving situation. We also are looking at the impact summer has on new teacher orientation, ninth grade orientation, seventh grade orientation, the sneak-a-peek at the kindergarten center on all those things that take place most summers as a matter of course. We also are awaiting word regarding the fall sports season. Bridget mentioned that the spring has been canceled. We have not heard any definitive words yet about fall sports and how they may or may not be impacted, and obviously, practice for fall sports, which would begin in June, right now is on hold until further notice. The same is true with marching band and in terms of their work in the summer. So we have a group working on that, and when I'm saying they're working on it, they're working on two or three different scenarios based on what we're being told. We also have a large group of folks working on restart for school, and again, we're not certain on how that restart's going to be. We are, we don't know, are we going to be back with everybody coming to school, or we're going to have to continue distance learning? Is there going to be some kind of a hybrid that we have to look at? So we are working on developing schedules and plans for all of those, and without a lot of guidance from the state yet on, because no one seems to know, and understandably so, no one seems to know what's going to be happening in the fall. There is a plan on tonight's agenda that, for the current program that we are using, that plan was shared with the Board in March and was sent off to the county in March and was approved at the county and state level. The state decided a couple of weeks ago that they'd like to have that approved by the Board, so that plan is on the agenda. However, the state also has reached out to us, all the school districts, not just Rutherford, last week to say they want the plan revised and through a whole bunch of other things that we have to add into that plan, and that has to go off to the county by May 22nd. I've been working on that the last few days. It's just about finished. We'll send it off to the county on May 22nd, and the Board will have to approve that one as well after it gets sent to the county. That would probably be on the June 1st agenda. The plan I am talking about is on our website, and it talks about how we're delivering distance learning, who are essential workers on staff, how various, how special education is being delivered, lunch for the free and reduced program, all the things that have been part of distance learning, and more pieces have been added to that mix. Bridget mentioned some things, I want to mention a few others that are going outside of the normal classroom stuff. Our, our teachers are working together in the district to try to come up with some way of getting student artwork and through social media or through Zoom somehow present it as kind of a virtual art show. Our, I know our choir at the high school did a kind of in-house concert for the seniors, but for other members of the choir as well last week through Zoom. You know, we had our pop cert, senior athletes who usually experience senior night. Mr. Fraser is working with the coaches to have senior night for the spring athletes by visiting each of their houses and leaving what they usually get a senior night on their doorstep. Plans are in, in place for that, and parents and athletes will be contacted about that. We have worked on the physical education teachers on the elementary level with Mr. Fraser, are developing plans for a virtual field day, because field day is something every year that the elementary students look forward to, so they're coming up with some activities that could be done in homes and online and in the backyard and that kind of thing, and they're working on that. They have also come up with various virtual field trips for the elementary students. Senior parents are, have worked through the administration of the high school, and when we thank the parents for a banner, I guess, that they're going to get, a post, a big sign that seniors will be able to sign, and that's going to go up on a high school, probably on the back fence area. Also, the PTA has been working with the high school PTA to get a sign to put up on the lawn for the seniors, and as we get closer to the end of June. So all of that's been going on. Bridget mentioned the lights down the field, the virtual senior breakfast. I know the high school administration today met with project graduation parents to talk about some things that can be done down the line with project graduation and a combination of input with some of the senior money that would go towards events to try to run some kind of event, and that's probably embryonic right now, and I know we have the high school principal and assistant principal and the project graduation parents in the virtual room, so if I let the cat out of the bag, I apologize, but that is something that's going on, and, and those are some of the activities. I probably left out grades, you know, pre-K to the 18 to 21 program, things that, you know, I did this from memory before as I went through the list. There's a lot of things that have been going on for our students from pre-K to 12. I want to address some things about graduation. Bridget, I think, spoke very eloquently about it, about the disappointment and the reality of things and kind of weigh and balance both of those. One of the things I want to share is fluid, is the word that we've been throwing around a lot, because we are in a very fluid environment. Every day, the Governor goes on TV. Every day, he says something that either is interpreted or assumed, or in many times, a, an absolute directive, and as information changes, things change. For example, at 4:20 today, I was sent a survey from the Department of Education, State Department of Education, to fill out and submit with information regarding high school graduation. I received a same survey from the Department of Education about the same topic four days ago. So there's a constant, it seems to be gathering of information and regurgitating of information as we go through. As of now, we shared with you the information that came out of the State Department of Education and the Office of Emergency Management over the weekend. It's very clear, I think, what they said, it's very clear what they are mandating in terms of current situation. They use the word "current situation" a lot. Mr. Moreno has used the word "if things change" versus effect, "we will respond accordingly", because things have been changing, unfortunately, and sometimes baffling, they seem to be changing for the worse, even though we hear that things are getting a little better. But nonetheless, that's what we're, we're dealing with. Beginning in April, probably the second week of April, some combination of my office, the high school office have, did a lot of things. We reached out to MetLife Stadium to see what they would be willing to do in terms of their parking lot, should something like that be allowed. They told us they would make no decision until May 15th, when the Governor had said he was going to make a decision, and when the Governor made the decision, they came out and said, "Well, we can't do anything right now. We're the same edicts, and they're managed by the state police." We reached out to, I did, had several meetings, Zoom meetings, and several conversations with all the superintendents of Bergen County. In fact, I had another one about 35 minutes ago, 40 minutes ago, right before I came on here. Mr. Moreno has had several meetings with the county principals, again, about a number and number of topics. I'm talking about dedicated meetings to the topic of graduation and end-of-year closing. We have, we have met with the Borough Administrator, the Mayor, the Chief of Police, in order to see what they would allow, see how they interpret rules and regulations, and get their partnership, and they have been very cooperative with us, and they've been giving us good advice and been trying to work with us. We've also been in touch with lawyers to find out their interpretation of various directives that come out, and also things that can and can't be done. In addition to that, I get daily updates from the State Office of Emergency Management, direct updates from them and from CDC, and I've been trying to utilize that information to the best of my ability to, first of all, understand it all, reach out to people who can help me understand it and work, and filter that down to the schools. So right now, you know, the plan is what we said, right? The plan is the virtual graduation, and as we're also saying, we need to be able to adapt to changes. We came up with this idea after all that work we did in work meeting, all that research and discussion and checking with lawyers and checking with all those people I mentioned, that the safest thing we could do, the thing that we could do, was the virtual graduation and a caravan that would span over, we were going to span it over about five hours, six hours, because we won't say with the, you know, the 50 cars or so for management of traffic safety, for management of streets, and for also to try to be as compliant as we could with social distancing rules. When we came up with that plan, we were kind of one of the first ones to throw that out there in the meeting, and people told me right away in the county, "Oh, that's not going to fly, that's not going to fly." And then very shortly thereafter, about 50, 60% of the schools in Bergen County said they were going to do the same thing or something similar. said they were going to do the same thing or something similar to it. And we all thought that would fly until Friday night came and we were told it isn't going to fly. So again, we have to be flexible. I, I mentioned to Mr. Moreno today that it's been seven years since I was the principal of the high school and had to work with Mr. Fraser to run graduation. If Ms. Moreno decided to, you know, jump up and leave and I had to go be the high school principal tomorrow and run high school graduation, I could do that. We, we have this graduation ceremony, a traditional one. We pretty much have followed it and with Mr. Fraser's help and the administrators' help, we have done it for probably 30, 40 years in the same fashion. We will be able, if some miracle occurred, that said, hey, you can go outside, we'd be able to turn that around very quickly. We don't have to plan for that. We don't have to tell people what's going to happen about that because everybody would be very happy with that. And everybody understands what happens with that. To get the virtual graduation done, it requires a lot of work, a lot of time to get all the pieces done remotely, get them together, edit them properly and make it the nicest ceremony we could make under the circumstances. So please don't misunderstand what I am saying. What I'm saying is, right now, this is what we can do. But just because we're saying, you know, make sure you always read the last line that says, if things change, we will have to adapt, whether they change for the better or they change for the worse. We're going to have to adapt to that. Now, the other thing I'm just going to mention, you know, there, there is some discussion about, well, you know, postponing and doing it down the road. Again, I'm going to say what I've been saying about that. We will see what happens and what we have to adapt to. There is no one willing yet to say that any date in the near future is going to be allowable to have crowds, even crowds as many as 50 or 60 people. There's three phases that we have to go through. We're not in phase one yet. So again, we're waiting for guidance on this. We're waiting to hear, you know, what we can do and what's feasible to do and what's reasonable to do. I understand that there's a couple of schools and I'm not going to say anything about anybody else. We're all going through a tough time and people do what they have to do and say what they have to say. And there are two schools in, out of the 50 in Bergen County who have already said that they're going to postpone it, but they, but again, they picked a date that the governor later today said, I don't see anything happening during that timeframe. So we have to be, you know, this is a tough thing. Bridgette said it's a tough thing. But I don't think we want to give people a false sense of hope. We want to have hope and hope is, we're going to do the best we can to alter plans based on the directives we're getting. I, I'll share, you know, on a personal level, I think this stinks. I think, you know, I think it's horrific, but it's not, you know, what's going on in our state, in our region, in the country is horrific. You know, the loss of, of life is astronomical, the business loss, the cultural loss, the artistic loss, the impact it has on, on everybody is terrible. From a very narrow perspective of, of Rutherford, you know, I've, I, the night I like the most is graduation. I understand as a student and a parent, it means a heck of a lot more because I'm a parent and I had four kids who graduated high school. I get it. And as a, someone who was the principal of the high school and now a superintendent, this year will be my 43rd Rutherford graduation. I think that's got to be in the Guinness Book of Records. I don't think anybody's been to 43 graduations at Rutherford. And I've been presiding over 20 of them. And it's sad. I feel it for the parents and I feel it for the students. And if Mr. Fraser would tell you, and Mr. Moreno would tell you, and Mr. Barry could tell you that every year at graduation rehearsal, the comment that we say to the students is, listen, this is as more for your parents than it is even for you, you know? Make sure you don't misbehave because your parents are waiting to have that shiny moment with, in the stands looking at you. I get it. I also get what the governor's law is. I also get what restrictions we have. I also get the fact that we cannot violate that. And I also get that we have to be together to try to make it the best we can and to stay flexible, to try to do what we can when we get the appropriate guidance that we can do it. So, you know, I didn't tell you anything tonight that you already know, but I did want to share with you what we've been doing, what we've been thinking and what we are still working on and doing. It's a non, we've been doing this really nonstop in terms of reaching out. Like I said, today, in the last two, three hours, we've been in communication with every superintendent in the county, every principal in the county and the State Department of Education, all about information regarding graduation. Okay, so that is my report. I know I appreciate the length of it. It was a lot to go over between facilities and distance learning. One other kind of related thing for distance learning, we will be sending out for those folks who take the subscription, courtesy of us. We will be sending out this week the re-up for next year and also information about the refund they're getting for the, which they can either get in a check or in terms of credit towards next year. That information will be going out to those parents this week. I think I covered everything. There's a few things I'm going to get to when we get to various aspects of the agenda, on a few agenda items to comment on them. Okay? Thank you, Dr. Alati.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any comments for Mr. Hurley?
I do.
Mrs. Ahmed?
You know, being chairperson of personnel, I've never, I mean, for going on 20 years, or I think Diane said it's now 20 years, but I have never seen a town. I've never been so proud of anyone like the faculty that we have, the administration that we have, our superintendent, the pressure, the different scenarios that we've gone through. The whole town has had such pressures in different ways. But I'm proud to say that I've never seen anything like this and I thank them from the bottom of my heart. I'm sure a lot of parents out there must feel the job and the stress that they've been under, you know? Send out a good word to them. They're doing such a great job and I thank them.
Thank you. I was just going to comment on some things that Mr. Hurley, just, you know, in regard to graduation. Just taking a step back, it's an interesting time to become the president of this board in January, right as a pandemic was taking place. But I know that Mr. Hurley and I have been in touch a few times and I know that you have been really partnering with the borough, has been great mayor and council about options, looking at New York state compliance. I, myself, as a school administrator, have never seen policies, laws and regulations change at such a fast pace with so many things that are being updated. So, and myself, you know, I have an eighth grader who's leaving Union School this year. I have an 11th grader who's thinking about what college applications are going to look like next year and how different everything is going to be and what is going to happen with SATs and ACTs. And, you know, so I know we're all really impacted and, and I can appreciate just having conversations with you, Mr. Hurley, how much you've been thinking about all the angles and really trying to do the best you can to think about what's the best we can do for the students, for students at the, at the center of it. So I, I know it's, it's, you know, doesn't, not everything's going to meet everyone's, you know, ultimate hopes, but I think the most important thing is, you know, how we look back on this time and are able to say we did as much as we could for the students. So I'm appreciative of all the time you've put into thinking about some of these various things.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Diane.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I went down to Tryon Field last Friday night. It was the first time that the lights were going to shine on Tryon Field and the scoreboard was going to be lit 2020, which it was. It was a rainy night, so it was dark and gloomy. There weren't a whole lot of people there. But it was a nice trip. It's about the only thing that we can start with this. But this Friday night and all these Friday nights until graduation, that same gesture will be with the lights on Tryon Field and shining into the field and the scoreboard lit up 2020 for this senior class.
If I could just comment briefly about that, if you don't mind, Dr. Alati. You know, again, you, I think, Dr. Alati, you mentioned, and I think Mrs. Ahmed also mentioned the community aspect, you know, one of the things that we had worked with, a lot of the high schools who, who said, where they started, you know, they have their own football field, their own athletic field on their campus and they had total control over, you know, the lights and turn them on. You know, it was wonderful, the cooperation that we got from the director of recreation and the mayor and the borough administrator to take the time to make sure that we could have access and get everything set up. So I want to thank them for that as well. I know Mr. Moreno and Mr. DeBarry were downfield and they were, you know, turning on the scoreboard and so on. But without the cooperation of the recreation department and the mayor and council, you know, we, we would not have had access and they gave it to us. And, and quite frankly, they've been, and the police department have been wonderful in trying to guide us, give us good advice and be at our disposal for anything we might need.
Okay. Any other comments by board members? All right, here we're done. We're going to move on to the report of the president. So keep it brief. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's joined us this evening, all the Rutherford residents and, and families. It's great to see a nice Zoom showing. I also want to thank the board. This is the third virtual meeting that we've had and of all three meetings, we've had all nine of us board members be able to attend. So really appreciate that. I know our schedules are all looking crazy and different than what we're used to. And I also know that families and students are experiencing all kinds of changes to our normal way of school business and operations, thinking about changes to curriculum, programs, policies, facilities and access, and even things behind the scenes, HR policies and, and things that are coming up that really require Mr. Hurley and Mr. Kelly and the principals to have to pivot. And on top of the normal school operations, really sort of deal with all these, these new aspects that are, that are going on. You know, those include managing remote learning, which I think for myself, having two students is, is going exceptionally well. I think, you know, having Mr. Hurley, knowing that you have initiated reopening task forces to talk about all the different angles of what that's going to look like, to put risk mitigation at the forefront of our thinking is really important. And also the new unexpected details that you have to manage on a daily basis. And on, and on top of all those things, we've got the referendum facilities projects that are starting as well. So, and I think our job as a board is not to run the schools, but making sure the schools are running well. And I think that Mr. Hurley's outlined that in a few ways. You know, first is making sure that school operations continue, that we're in compliance with New Jersey State and federal regulations. And, you know, continued partnership that I'm really appreciative that we've seen had with the borough thus far, with the mayor and council and an openness and a willingness to work with us and collaborate where appropriate. And also the continued communication with families. I know myself, being on social media, but just receiving emails, knowing what's happening in the district and hearing about the successes of things that are happening, continued student achievements, the updates to guideline changes. And I know forthcoming, as facility projects get underway, there'll be a communication effort with Rutherford residents to make sure there's a real transparency so that you can understand how all the facilities projects are taking place. And then of course, there's the strategic planning efforts for the future and we've heard some of that. But there's going to be a lot of those things related to, you know, programs, policies, fiscal budget responsibility mandates. So I also don't want to forget about the things that, you know, also I think make our schools really special. This past year, you know, Mr. Hurley began the Parent Academy and I think the creation of the Parent Academy to bridge the homeschool connection, making sure families are in sync with key topics that are being discussed and talked about in school. And so look forward to the continuation of that. And then really, I, I wanted to take a moment and I know that Mr. Hurley let all the board members know, but you know, since we have a good audience here this evening, I wanted to share just a shout out to a number of our students who continue to just really soar and stand out in terms of accomplishments. And, you know, there's so many different great things going on. And as we focus on for a second, the arts and literature, there is a PTA reflections contest. And I want to give a shout out to, you know, some of our students who did phenomenally well. So basically in that contest, students in pre-K to 12th grade submit original works of art in the areas of dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography and visual arts. Mr. Hurley let us know that at Rutherford High School alone, we had four state level winners and one national winner. And I think it's important, an open session and for this recording, for all of us to be able to echo their names and know about these great accomplishments. So want to congratulate, congratulate Katie Whaley, who won the Award of Excellence in Literature, Julia Lorenz, who won the Award of Merit in Literature, Katie Corcoran, who won the Outstanding Interpretation Award in Music Composition, Sarah Gresile, who won the, the Award of Excellence in Music Composition, Daniel Gregory, who won the Honorable Mention in Music Composition. So these winning pieces, they're all going to go to a national competition. But Katie Corcoran won the Award of Merit in the Nationwide Contest and her work's going to be showcased in January of 2021 at the U.S. Department of Education in Washington DC and in June of 2021 at the National Convention and Expo in Grapevine, Texas. So I think it's important as we go through these difficult times to highlight and celebrate the successes of, you know, all of our phenomenal students and all the great things that we're doing. And finally, I want to echo Mrs. Ahmed's comments about how proud she is of the faculty and staff. I'm also humbled and I want to continue to say that, you know, we don't know what's going on behind the scenes with the faculty and staff. You know, they have little kids at home fighting for their attention. They're, you know, managing, you know, sick potential family members and friends, yet they continue to just be committed to the sense of community that we've all come to expect and love about the schools. And again, want to thank the leadership of the administration and Mr. Hurley for everything done. So I will stop there and see if there are any questions or comments from the board.
Dr. Alati, we have our national winner in one of, you know, one of the Hollywood squares on my screen over here.
Yeah, right. There she is. Katie, congratulations. So congratulations. So hearing no other comments from the board, this time we're going to move into the portion of the meeting that's open to the public. So there's, there's two open sessions to the public. The first is going to be an open session to the public for comments related to agenda topics this evening. And then later on, at the end of the meeting, we'll open up the meeting again to any agenda or non-agenda related items. So just a couple of reminders, we try to ask that people limit their comments to about three minutes or so, just so we can hear as many people as possible. We'll try to limit it to up to 30 minutes. You know, we have a number of people. So depending on how many people speak, when you, what we'll ask you to do is raise your hand or write in the chat box to let us know you'd like to say something. And we'll do our best to make sure that we get you in the right order. Finally, I just want to say that, that the open portion of, of the meeting, it's not a back and forth between the public and myself as president of the board or the superintendent. But what I do want to say is that all of your opinions and your feedback is very valuable. And it's really important as part of a strong community that we're able to hear all your comments. And I want you to know, and I've got my pen here and I'll be writing down, you know, anything people have to say. And board members here are, you know, really interested to hear anything that people want to mention. And even if we're not commenting during this meeting, please know that a lot of the work we do are in board committees behind the scenes and we do take all your feedback seriously. So I wanted to say that in advance. So with that, at 8:19 PM, we're going to open up the meeting to the public for agenda related items. items. Okay, I don't see any comments. Does anyone else see anyone who's looking to make a comment?
Anybody here? I don't know how this works.
We're going to start.
Anybody hear me?
Yes.
I like how everyone's already upset that I'm talking.
So if you say your name and address, then you can start.
Okay, Scott Ahern, 232 Washington Ave. For those that do not know me, I have six kids, well, five kids now, in the Rutherford education system, and let me start off by saying, I'm above and beyond proud of everything that you guys are doing for us, but that's as quick as I'm going to say it, I'm going to get to the important stuff. We spoke about graduation. Mr. Hurley, I had you as a teacher, I've worked with you as a colleague, I have nothing but respect for you. One thing that I'm looking for, the one thing that I listened in how you basically gave everything, is that you guys had a plan. You guys had what you believed to be a very good plan, and by having that very good plan, we realized that Governor Murphy basically put the kibosh on that as of Friday or over the weekend, however you want to put it. There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be one plan or a couple of plans, and then this virtual graduation thing. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be like that. We should have 300 plans before we get to a virtual graduation. Being a father of a senior right now, it's very hard explaining to my daughter, and as you guys might know me, I'm very strict with my kids. For the past 12 years, I've told Skyler that she's not allowed to do extra, do this, do that, she had to work hard for school, but her senior year is what she's working for. All that's gone, from softball to graduation to everything. We should have 300, 500 other options before we get to a virtual graduation, which is garbage, no disrespect to anybody, I know it's all we can do. Mr. Hurley, you said something very specific. Hello? I'm sorry. All right. Mr. Hurley said something very specific.
Yes, that's out. Oh, my gosh, Oscar.
Sorry about your dog.
If I'm going to ask everyone else, would you completely put on mute so that we can't hear you while the person is speaking? That'd be great, thank you.
Poor Oscar. All right.
I have no idea.
Basically, it comes down to this, a lot of you have had kids that have graduated already, a lot of you have kids that are going to graduate, but unless you have a senior that's graduating this year, and I see a lot of you on here, I see a lot of you parents that work in the schools, that work in town, that have seniors that are graduating this year, nobody else gets it. Our kids are crushed, as is the entire country, I'm not saying our kids are special, but to me, they are. Nobody else can understand how broken and how disappointed these kids are that we need to come up with 500 ideas. Listen to the parents, and you all know me, I'm a police officer in town, I'm very specific about following the law, but we all know that by following the law, there's other ways you could do it, to still do it by making it legal. We need to, we need to focus, we have less than 30 days to make sure these kids are taken care of. I don't have any options right now, but we need to open up some kind of open communication between everybody, so everybody has a say. That's my three minutes, that's all I can say, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ahern. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. Mr. Lazaro, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Aladi, thank you very much. Lazaro DeGennaro, 66 Wingrae Avenue. Thank you all for the meeting, for allowing us to join. One thing I just want to make note of, as of this afternoon at 2:30 PM, the Governor Murphy Administration said that they will allow forms of wave parades, including those for graduation celebrations, as long as they don't exceed, I guess, whatever group numbers was specified, or will then be specified after another 30 days that he plans. Listening to what Mr. Hurley was saying earlier, in some of the options that he said they were going through, I didn't hear anything about that particular option. Just want to put that on the table and make sure that everyone is aware of that, that that did come out this afternoon at 2:30 from the Governor's Administration.
I do, I would like to comment on that. At the Governor's press conference today, both he and Colonel Callahan spoke about that, and what they said, and again, I just got this about an hour ago, so if you want a cold reading of it, what they are saying is that wave parades would be allowed as long as they are in small groups, like you said, and going by a graduate's house or a person's house, to, what we've seen happen already, right, in the community for birthdays and things like that, I'm sure for Mother's Day yesterday, there were some, what they will not be allowed is if you're organized by a school, if you're held at the school, if you're held at the field. So our plan, which was to have students come by the high school, get out for a photo op, that's still not allowed, but what they're saying is, you know, if 20 parents or kids want to drive by your son's or daughter's house, they can't. Now, to my point, on last Wednesday, it was one thing, last Friday is something else, today, they're throwing a different wrinkle to it. That's why I think we need to, you know, stay flexible, and let's see where we're at on June 1st. Let's see where we're at on June 5th. To Mr. Ahern's point, we can put things, we could get things to happen pretty quickly if we have to, but yes, I saw that, I think it was a little misleading, the way the headlines are being written, but if you read it, it's not allowed in the way we and many other schools were thinking of doing it. But I appreciate you bringing it up, and I, quite frankly, I had it here to bring up, and I just into it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, are there other comments from the public? Okay, Ms. Rogers.
Oh, I know, hi, sorry. Lori Rogers, 47 Mean Place. So, yeah, so we saw the press conference today and the way it's being interpreted, and I think this is where the problem is. The interpretation is being done on, you know, just not even making sense of different interpretations. So before you cancel, like, some of these school districts did cancel their caravans, they are big, huge school districts, so they can't even bring it back. I'm just asking that we don't cancel anything because Colonel, he retracted everything and said that he can't stop cars, because he was interviewed. The point is that as long as they're in their cars and they're not congregating, people aren't congregating in one area, it's allowed. So even in cars, at the school, they're in their cars, as long as people aren't on Park Avenue congregating and making a big group, he retracted all of it. So I know it's like moving parts, and we need to, like, see what goes on, but I feel like also that I feel like our district should fight and lobby if they can, because the reason he retracted and why it was such a quick turnaround is because of social media, parents and everybody lobbying and going on social media and saying, wait a minute, you can't open boardwalks by Memorial Day, but not have a graduation on the same boardwalk or stage. So I think that it's important for our district, if you can, to lobby and let them know why this doesn't make sense. Get on committees that they have at the state level, tell them why we can do this at certain levels and certain districts that aren't huge and aren't regionalized and aren't bust. So I appreciate that, if that hasn't been done, that can be done, because obviously, in one day, this backlash changed in one day, if we get on that lobby chain.
Can I comment, Ms. Rogers? Thank you, first of all, for that, and let me just, points about two things you said. I think Mr. DeGennaro said it was like 2:30 or something where the press conference was, at about 10 to 3, Mayor Nuzziata came into my office and said that you just hear what, you know, the Governor was talking about, and we said, and he said he was going to be talking to Chief Russo, and his suggestion was, let's meet, again, as a group, with Mr. Moreno, Chief Russo, Mayor, the Borough Administrator, but let's wait till maybe next Monday or Tuesday to meet, to see how things play out. And again, I, you know, if I told everybody everything that we're saying, what we're going to do, what we're going to meet, that was going on forever, we are doing what you're saying, we're meeting, as far as lobbying, you know, I'm going to speak very honestly. I have, I have been, you know, for those of you that know me, like, you know, Scott said he knows me from when he was a kid, you know, I'm not too bashful, I say what I think, and I've said it to the county people, and I've said it to my colleagues, and I've said it, but, but here's the thing, you know, I get how the 200 parents times, you know, 300, 400, 500 blended families, parents feel, and all of you are citizens, and all of you could do that lobbying, send a letter to the Assemblymen, send a letter to the Governor, let your voices be heard. My voice has been heard, and it'll continue to be heard, but I'm seen as one person who's the Superintendent of Schools. I'm one vote, you know, I'm one voice. I, whether I agree or disagree with all of, some of, or none of what's coming out of Trenton, I am, I am basically, I don't swear to an oath, but it's the closest thing to it, I sign the thing that I'm going to follow the edicts of the state and the Department of Education, and, you know, I'm just a voice. You folks, listen to what Sir Rogers just said. I mean, send an email to the Governor, send an email to the State Senator, the Assemblyman, voice your concern. I think the one-size-fits-all thing is problematic, not only here in New Jersey, but in the country right now. And when you look at the cases in Marion County, and you look at the cases of illness, and you look at the cases of death, and you compare that to Salem County or Cape May County, you know, yeah, I mean, there's certainly an imbalance, right? Things that we could do, Wallington may graduate, I don't know, 40 kids, we graduate 200, Hackasack's going to graduate 450 or so. I mean, there's differences in what can be done, but the thing that, you know, but taking the other side of it, you also have to understand, I know you all do understand, that once Rutherford does something, then Hackasack is saying, why can't we do it? Once Wallington does something, so in some ways, I understand why it's, you know, one-size-fits-all, because what's the line of demarcation? You know, what's the magic number of students that you could do something and then you can't? But I do think, you know, the old Rolling Stones song, right, "Time is on our side here a little bit." We're going to run out of time at some point, and that's why we need to have a plan of what to do if we run out of time. But at the same token, I agree with everything you're saying, we should take our time, you know, we have an obligation to tell you, as parents, when the State Department says to us, you all, no in-person graduations are going to be allowed, no car, caravans are going to be allowed, you know, I'm paraphrasing, I think we have an obligation to tell you that, and we also have an obligation to plan accordingly. Today, for the third time in the last three weeks, I had to send to the State Department of Education what our plans are for graduation. I can't send them a plan that says, you know, is a self-fulfilled, they want me to tell them what they already told me, why are you asking me my plans? You told me what my plans are, right? So I can't write my plans or something else, but I think we could wait, I think we have to be wary to be able to move in a different direction, up or down, if we have to, right? But I also think your idea about reaching out to the people who are making the decisions as the people who vote for those people is a great idea. So I appreciate you saying that, and I hope, you know, because maybe, so this way you could call him instead of calling me, and I'm only kidding, but if, but if, you know, I would think that that would be a good thing for people to do, at least you're being heard, because I'm not the decision-maker here. You know, you know, when I go around the elementary schools and the teachers say, does anybody know who Mr. Hurley is? The universal number-one answer is, oh, he's the guy that calls off school when it snows, okay? That's what they all say, right? Well, that authority now, I don't have that authority in this case. I can't make those decisions, this Board of Education doesn't have the authority, okay? So I listen to you, I understand what you're saying, I do my best to try to see how we could get that, you know, massage the rules a little bit, but I think letting your voice be heard is a good thing, and I encourage that.
All right, thank you. I want to see if we have other comments from the public at this time. Ms. DeVanzo, yes?
Yes. Hi, everyone, Joanna DeVanzo, 75 Inslee Avenue. I came here tonight, I was going to talk about graduation and all that kind of stuff. I can't really say much more, I think, than everybody else has already said, and in relation to all the restrictions, I mean, actually, Governor Murphy, I think, did all of you a favor, right, the Board of Ed and Mr. Hurley and stuff, because it's kind of out of your hands now, so it kind of came at the perfect timing, just before this meeting. But one thing I did want to bring up, because I hear everybody talking about how well everyone's doing, and let, you know, all the kudos that we're doing for the kids and for the teachers and all that, and I think that's great, but there's a lot of kids that aren't doing really well either. There's a lot of kids who are struggling, kids that already had maybe some sort of mental health issue, I think it is even exacerbated at this time, and I think the kids that never struggled with any sort of anxiety are really struggling with that right now. So I look at that from a perspective of having a senior, right, and the seniors that are going off and were looking to all this fun stuff that was happening in this last bit of their high school years, that's all unknown and probably not happening. So now, the next thing I have to look forward to is college starting, and that's completely up in the air for these kids, too. And I understand that once June 30th passes, you know, that's not the responsibility for the schools anymore, they aren't, but it is a responsibility for us as parents. But what is, I think, a responsibility of the schools is, so if school isn't going to open up in September, what's going to be in effect, what's going to be in place for the kids that are in the school system to help them out, to understand that they all don't do well with distance learning, right? That they, they may need some extra help, or they may need something that they're actually really struggling in a way that they never have before, the anxiety that they have for what's going to happen in the world in general. So I would just like some thought to be put against that for the kids of the future of Rutherford, that they don't know what their next step is. So it's not really looking for a response, it's just, I would hope that, I know that there's all these committees that I'm hearing that are being put together, so I hope that there's something being put together to look at that and to see what's going to happen with these kids.
I'm going to give a 30, I know this, I've been talking a lot, 10, 15 seconds, okay? Yes, the committees are looking at that, and I have said, from the first day that we've been shut down, and the first day, not just the school, the state, the county, the country, I'm more concerned about the emotional impact than I am even about the health impact, because all of us, you know, are struggling with everything that we're used to doing not happening. So we are very much aware of and very concerned of, we struggle with the limitations we're given, but we are addressing it, and for September, that's going to be part of, hopefully, a robust plan, you know, depending on how we reopen. My hope is we're going to have kids in the building, and that's everybody's hope, and that's a lot easier than to at least address, but we're going to plan for what happens if we don't, okay?
Okay, thank you. Do we have other comments from the public? Yep, it looks like, Ms. Freed.
Hi, how you doing? Hi, Mr. Hurley, hi, everybody. Um, I think my question's pretty quick, I'm not sure if you're able to answer this question right now, but, um, I was wondering about having the virtual graduation ceremony in June, and if you are open, Mr. Hurley, to postponing it, to have a more traditional graduation later on. So, like, I think it was Ridgewood or whatever said, we might have it at the end of July, and if we can't do it, then we're looking at having it Thanksgiving weekend. I'm not sure how feasible that is, perhaps it would be to have it at the Washington School Auditorium, like we would if it was raining, but are you open to postponing, and how far out are we, or are you allowed to do that? Like, I don't know if there's insurance issues or whatever else might come into play.
I'm not open or unopened, I'm listening to all ideas, I'm listening to what people are doing. You raised a couple of good points, come the last day of school for seniors, which is why Project Graduation has always been separate from school, and not our students anymore. not our students anymore, insurance and things like that, they're not covered, I mean, those are things you can always do a workaround on if you had to with policies and so on and so forth, I think the last count, there are 50 high schools in Bergen County, and I think not all have checked in yet, but I think there's only two that are considering postponing it, there are a lot of, of, into all the, into all the details, there's a lot of things that are both good and bad about that, as I said early on, you know, we're not closing the door on anything, but, but realistically, the, that postponing, especially the further down the road you get, the harder I think it gets, and also, you know, some of the things that, you know, I talk to the superintendents and, and to the principals, and some of the things people are saying, and what they're actually planning on doing are sometimes don't, are not one of the same, so, I'm trying to be a little more forthright, so, we're not closing the door on anything.
Okay.
But I'll be honest with you, some doors are open more wisely than others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the public? All right, I don't see anyone else, so, at 8:41 PM, we are going to close the meeting to the public, I do want to say a heartfelt thank you to everyone for all of your comments, like I said, you know, we're all listening, we're all here to hear what the concerns are and the thoughts are, and all the things you mentioned are valid and are going to be given consideration and are really appreciated, so, we are going to move now into new business, where action will be taken, and we're going to start with personnel, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Ahmed to take us through that.
Thank you, Dr. Sargent, we have 25 motions today for the board's approval, if they so accept that, number one is contract renewal, certified staff, non-tenured, as listed, number two, contract renewals for non-certified and non-tenured, that includes bus drivers, custodians, technology, lunch full monitors, maintenance, and clerical library and bus assistance, number, and then teacher assistance with that, and secretary. Motion two of four are to accept the resignations of three, Megan Newmuller, four, Ashley Mescola, and five, Samantha Singer, six, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, let's take them so far, they're all special education teacher, six is Dana Romano, elementary teacher, pure font effective September, these are all to approve their approvals, eight, another approval, Elizabeth McCabe, as STEM teacher, pure font, nine, Nicole Alelas, to approve her as a special education teacher at Washington School, 10, Natalia San Pedro, a leave replacement elementary teacher at, where is it, Washington School, number 11 is Paulina Luxich, a school psychologist at Union School, to approve her, number 12, Monica Rizzi, to approve her as a English teacher at Rutherford High School, number 13, Madison DeBakian, a leave replacement for a special ed teacher at Washington School, she will be a leave replacement, 14, Maria Valente, a leave replacement elementary teacher at Lincoln School also, number 15, Sarah McGarren, to accept, to approve her as a leave replacement elementary teacher at Washington School, 16, Jacqueline Roskowsky, approve her as an elementary teacher at Washington School also, 17, Alela Jordan, to approve her as a replacement teacher at Washington and Lincoln, and 18, Caitlin McCallum, that was a little different, disability leave with pay, it's for maternity, 19, Caitlin Jefta, is also a maternity leave for her, following, what do you call it, digital arts teacher, yeah, it's just a maternity disability leave, 20, Nicole Ailey, same thing for her, she's going to have a baby and leave of absence, the Family Leave Act, 21, Lauren Sepatino, another approved disability for maternity at Union School, she's a science teacher there, 22, disability leave again for a baby, Kelly Santana, 23, Lauren Ditchik, also, family leave absence for her for maternity, 24, Eileen Hildig, to approve Eileen to work for five days during the summer months as a clerical assistant at Lincoln School to complete GNT admissions, not exceed a total of 35 hours, and miracle, the certified quantitative merit criteria has been satisfied the Superintendent of Schools the 2019, 2020 school year, be it further resolved at the Rutherford Board of Education to prove the payment of merit bonus goals in the amount of $6,172, should I read that whole thing, Mr. President, quantitative goal?
Um, yeah, I would, I would normally say, you know, the whole board has read it, but I think you can read it just because we have a, we're prepared to see what the...
Okay, and the quantitative goal, Superintendent will create and lead a district-level committee of administrators, teachers, parents, to develop a parent academy, the committee will develop programs to offer parents that reflect the district student center programs and growth mindset, mindfulness, and wellness, programs, presentations will be offered at back-to-school night and at special presentations, a minimum of three district-wide programs will be held in addition to building available presentations, the Superintendent will pursue presenters and online resources to develop research-based presentations, you might want to explain that to the public, I, I'm not sure, you know, about miracle.
You know, basically...
Any questions, I don't know, for them?
Yeah, so, basically...
Explain what it is, maybe?
Yeah, so, a miracle is basically a goal that is created by the Superintendent to achieve over the course of the year for the well-being of the district, and it's a goal that is comprehensive, he creates and is approved by the Board, and then the Board needs to measure that the goal is approved, and Mr. Hurley provides a written report to the Board that's evaluated, so that we can determine if the goal is met, and in fulfilling the goal, it becomes a merit bonus for the end of the year.
Okay, so, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, we asked the Board if they would like to accept 1 through 25.
Okay, we have a question from Mrs. Ahmed, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing Mr. Jones' second, any comments or questions from Board members about any of the personnel?
I have one question.
Yep, Mr. Haley.
Yes, on 13, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, Mrs. Ahmed, 13 has, in the text, Natalie San Pedro, and out in the, in the left column there, it says Madison DeBakian, is that just a typo, or is that...
Just, just really, I was about to say that, there's a correction in number 13, Madison should be the name that appears.
Did I read, oh, did I read Natalia, no?
Well, but both of those folks are being approved.
I probably said Madison, though, right?
Number 10, Natalia is...
13, but Madison.
Number 13, that should read...
So, I read San Pedro already.
No, Shelley, there's, there's two different people being approved, Natalia and Madison, but there was a typo in the narrative for number 13, Natalia should say Madison, and we'll correct that for the minutes.
Right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hurley, any other comments or questions from Board members? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly to take roll for approval, Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
And Dr. Awati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, next we have curriculum instruction, and Mrs. Jones is going to walk us through what was in your meeting minutes, and there's also an addendum she's going to put forth as well.
Thank you, there are five resolutions for Board member consideration under curriculum and instruction, resolution number one deals with the school calendar, of which Dr. Awati will speak to after, resolution two is remote instruction, which you have heard the reasons for it, resolution three is teacher evaluation, the, the practice of the evaluation instrument will be used for the 2020, 2021, and it's the same one that we've been using for several years, and resolution four, New Jersey principle for professional learning process, resolution five is the one that we just spoke to, and it is, the Boards of Education are asked to take a position on Senate Bill Number 2392 and Assembly Bill 3969, and we are saying, whereas Senate Bill 2392 and Assembly Bill 23969 currently pending in the state legislature would authorize the Department of Community Affairs to permit municipalities to delay or alter the transmission of property tax revenue to school districts during the declared emergencies, and whereas New Jersey's public schools are highly dependent on property tax revenue to support education programs, and whereas, on average, local property taxes constitute close to 60% of public school revenue, with the percentage even greater in a significant number of districts, in Rutherford, local property taxes constitute 87% of public school revenues, and whereas delaying or altering the transmission of property tax revenue from municipalities would result in a financial crisis for school districts, seriously disrupting the educational process, and whereas, although public school buildings are closed during the current health emergency, the education of our students is taking place through remote instruction, and therefore, continued timely transmission of all property tax revenue due to the school district is critical for the educational process to continue without interruption, and whereas, under our state's current structure, municipalities are designated as the authorities to collect property taxes, but those taxes are levied for specific purposes, purposes such as municipal, school, fire, county, and districts, and these obligations must continue to be met, and whereas municipal governing bodies are empowered under current law to borrow in order to ensure that full payments to school districts are made, whereas the Rutherford Board of Education recognizes the impact of the current public health emergency on the state and local governments, as well as local school districts, but believes that this legislation would only worsen the situation for our communities, and whereas, well, Senate Bill 2392 and Assembly Bill 3969 would require a municipality to pay a percentage of the revenue due to a school district based on consultation between the State Departments of Community Affairs and Education, the amount of taxes collected at the time, and the financial condition of the municipality and school district, it does not address subsequent payment to the school district to make up the full shortfall amount, and whereas, as currently written, Senate Bill 2392, Assembly 3969, which is designed to ease the financial burden on municipalities, would places severe strain on school districts and the students and families that they serve, now, therefore, be it resolved, the Rutherford Board of Education urges the state legislator and governor to oppose Senate Bill 2392, Assembly 3969, and be it further resolved that this resolution be delivered to Governor Philip D. Murphy, Senate, State Senate President Stephen M. Swinney, Assembly Speaker Craig Coglan, and the 36 legislative district representatives in the State Senate and General Assembly, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the New Jersey School Boards Association.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Hurley, I don't know if you want to comment on, like, translating that into a sentence or two, but also, I know that there's going to be a revision to the calendar, and if you wanted to just, just speak to that, just so the Board understands the thinking behind it.
Okay, let me start with the calendar, and then I will let Mr. Kelly maybe make a comment or two about the resolution for the municipal taxes, the calendar change, we had talked about this several weeks ago with the Board and with the administration, that if school closed, we would use the Friday before Memorial Day and the Tuesday after Memorial Day as regular school days, thereby making the last day of school Friday, June 19th, as opposed to Tuesday, June 23rd, we would keep the graduation dates as they were for both Union and the high school, whether they be virtual or any facsimile of something in between, we'd keep the days the same, the rationale behind that was, was very simple, we are, there was a thing in education, if I would be honest, kind of called the June Swoon, and, you know, June is a tough time of year, we are trying to get as much quality academic as we can into our calendar, we have two days in May, where I think, you know, folks are not experiencing the same kind of Memorial Day as it would be experienced in past years, and I think we get more, we get better, more education on those two days in May that we're going to get on Monday and Tuesday after weekend last week in June, so, we shared that with the faculty, the staff, the administration, we also put it out in an announcement to the community, and did not, we heard one person who didn't like it, but the other 3,000 either were silent or were okay with it, and I think it makes sense, because it gives us better, better classroom, you know, opportunity in May that we're going to get, weekend after that very important day of Father's Day, we're going to get, it's hard to come back from such a big holiday, I'm kidding, so, we think that's a good move, okay, and that's the rationale behind that. Keep in mind that the Friday day was a day that we didn't use all of our snow days, and we used two this year, because we used two for PD when we made the transition, the last three years, we've had one-session days on that Friday, and the PD day has been, I think, once in the last two years that we've had a PD day, so it's not always that weekend is the one weekend, but I am concerned, one of our, you know, speakers before talked about the concern for social, emotional, and I'm concerned about that, we're also going to be putting a lot of emphasis in the spring, in the, in the fall, rather, in assessing where kids are academically, is a third grader entering third grade, how does he measure up to where third graders entered in previous years, and every grade up and down the line, so, I'm trying to get the best of education as I can get, as many days we can get, Mr. Kelly, do you want to...
Of course, the, the way the budget typically works is that, once it is approved, then the municipality has an obligation to pay the tax levy to the school district, the entire amount in, in that school year, I usually, I always present a payment schedule to the CFO downstairs, and, you know, we've had a, we've had, never had an issue with this, it's, we work very well together, this, this legislation, S2392 and A3969, would permit municipalities to delay or defer payments to the school district, the problem issues there is that it's kind of an open-ended measure, there's no sense in the, in the legislation as to when the entire amount would have to be paid, the other thing to keep in mind is that school districts cannot go out and borrow money without a referendum, without a public vote of approval, municipalities can, so, if there is a shortfall, then common sense would say it'd be better for the municipality to go out and borrow funds, so, having said all that, we've had numerous discussions with the mayor, with representatives of the council, with the CFO, with the Borough Administrator here, to talk about our concerns, they understand those concerns, that, you know, we don't, we don't run a huge surplus here, and, yes, we don't have a lot of wiggle room there. And yes, we don't have a lot of wiggle room there. So, you know, they understand that, they're sensitive that we've agreed to continue talking and then work together to find solutions if this becomes an issue. But having said that, and you know, I trust the borough completely in those conversations. But having said that, this legislation is flawed. So it could create problems for other districts and other students. And if, you know, if we do not get the money that we're entitled to, then it impacts programs and it impacts personnel. So this could have wide-ranging impacts. So, so this is a chance to the board, if they approve this, to make a statement. In addition, board members, I had sent out a letter to you today. Again, this is a template that the New Jersey School Board sent out. If you wanted to send a letter to Trenton as an individual, not as a board member, you have that in your inbox as well. Thank you.
I did.
Okay.
I sent them to Assemblyman Calories, Chair, and Senator Sarlo.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hurley and Mr. Kelly for the explanation. So are there any questions or comments by board members? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Jones, are you moving those forward?
Resolutions one through five under curriculum instruction.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, Mr. Healy, all right, Mr. Healy is seconded. Any last comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Kelly to please take a roll.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Sprayberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on now to finance with a report from the Chair, Dr. Racine.
Okay, the finance, there has not been any committee meetings. We have 13 meeting, 13 items in agenda tonight. Number one is the approval bills. Number two is the April 2020 Treasury Report. Number three are the budget transfers, which are in your packet. Number four is to approve the 2021 cooperative transmission agreement. Number five is the contract. This agreement with the South Bergen Joint Church. Number six is the BCSSD agreement for 2021. Number seven is to approve the external services for 2021. Number eight is to approve the agreement with computer solutions for software support for the upcoming school year 2021. Number nine is to approve the agreement for LinkedIn. Number 10 is to approve the PSA as our architect of record for the upcoming year. Number 11 is to approve the amendment of the agreement with Delta Dental for next fiscal year 2021. Number 12 is to approve Phoenix Advisors as our bond advisors. And number 13 is to approve frontline management for technology education. For, yeah, so those are the 13.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions? So, Ms. Early, just to be clear, all these agreements, these are all renewals, right? There's nothing new that we're entering into?
To Kelly, you're right, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so Dr.?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so clearly, number 11, was the amendment to keep the rates equal or was the amendment something different?
The amendment is to extend it to the year 2021. As it turns out, the rates are the same, there's no change in them.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so Dr. Racine, you're moving those?
I move items one through 13 to finance.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Mazone? And hearing none, no other comments, I'll ask Mr. Kelly to please take a roll.
Mrs. Ahmed?
I'd like to abstain on number five, but all the rest are yes.
I'm sorry, abstain on number five?
Yes.
Well, you piqued my interest here, okay. Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Sprayberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to policy. Mrs. Librera?
Hello, so tonight we have nine policies that are being submitted for first reading. Almost all of them are mandated by law. I think there's one exception that has to do with the communication of the school day hours and the school day calendar that's recommended. In all other cases, things are mandated. So putting those forward for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, any comments you want to make on these policies?
Not anything major. I think Mrs. Librera was right on it. The ones of domestic violence are simply name changes for various agencies. The health and physical education is putting into policy the inclusion of the LGBT curriculum and the financial literacy curriculum that has to be included. And it has already been included in our curriculum. The administration of medication is an expansion of the same policy we have for EpiPen. This has to do with a hypercortisone injection that's needed for some kids with severe asthma. And who can, and regulates who can give that injection, where the medicine is stored and what training is needed. The two school year in the school day, the school year is a, in the school day, the school year is not required, but we have that in our policy. It simply says that every year I prepare a calendar to submit to the board and the board approves it. The school day is something that you could also put in, it's mandated. So we have to put that one in, which just does what we've always had in law, which is how many hours a day you need in order to count as a school day. So the four hours of instruction, not counting lunch or any other passing of time. And the other is name changes to the state, no, I'm sorry, the reporting potentially news children, simply saying, yeah, post the information in a prominent place in every building, which we do, but that's policy. So they're all pretty much boilerplate mandated policies of things already in place.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurley, thank you, Ms. Librera. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Librera, are you moving those forward?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Conti, seconded, any last comments or questions? All right, hearing none, Mr. Kelly, if you could take a roll?
Can't hear you, Joe.
You're muted, Joe.
No matter how much I shout, you can't hear me, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Sprayberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on now to buildings and grounds. We'll hear from our Chair, Mr. Healy.
Yes, thank you. We did not have a Buildings and Ground Committee meeting since our last board meeting. And tonight, we do have five resolutions being put forth, which I'll read in part. And I know Mr. Kelly will make comment about Resolutions three, four, and five. Number one is to renew the use of the Rutherford Public Library space for the Life Skills Program known as the Bulldog Academy. Number two is to accept the proposal from McCabe Environmental Services to provide asbestos abatement monitoring services at the four schools in conjunction with the district's facilities construction projects. Number three is to authorize the business administrator, Board Secretary, to, he's authorized to execute on behalf of the Rutherford Board of Education any natural gas contract proffered by the participating supplier that submits the winning bid in the EMEX reverse auction. Number four is to authorize the Board Secretary to accept and execute on behalf of the Rutherford Board of Education any electricity supply contract, again, proffered by the participating supplier that submits a winning bid in the EMEX reverse auction. And there's a difference between four and five, which is three parts to it versus, meaning four, which has both electricity capacity and transmission rates. While number five is the same thing, authorizing the Board Secretary to accept and execute a contract on the Rutherford Board of Education behalf for an electricity supply contract, again, proffered by the participating supplier that submits the winning bid in the EMEX reverse auction. And that one would be for electricity only. And Mr. Kelly, if you would possibly, these are addendums to four and five. Could you give just a brief explanation then of three, four, and five?
Sure, the current financial situation has created an opportunity to lock in some lower prices here. About a year and a half ago, we went out to auction for both natural gas and electricity supply. On the natural gas side, we locked in a rate of 56 and a half cents per therm back in November of 18. That was a 24-month contract and so it was coming up, coming due within the next six months. As it turns out, this weekend, I understand the company we're working with there, it's called East Coast Power and Gas, has officially gone out of business. So we need to move quickly on this one anyway. But like I said, because of the current financial situation, there is an opportunity here. So the numbers that you see in the motion are the strike prices and we'll make a decision based on which is most advantageous. What I'm understanding though is based on recent auctions, we can probably anticipate a price significantly lower than even the 36-month price that you see in the motion. So if, for some reason, these prices don't come in to our advantage, we don't have to do anything. But as I said, East Coast Power and Gas has gone out of business, so we need to lock into something else. Otherwise, we're paying straight market rates with PSENG. The other two are for the electric, same situation. We have an opportunity here because of the financial situation and the issues with the energy markets to lock in a better rate. We did go out, same time, October, November of 2018. We ended up with an 18-month contract, so that's expiring now anyway. We're currently paying about 10 cents per kilowatt hour, which was significantly, about a 6% decrease from what we were paying PSENG before that. So now, because the energy markets are in a state of flux now, we're going to, we're pursuing this through, you know, through two directions here. One, we'll look at establishing a new price based on, for the entire service provision. So when we talk about prices for electricity, we talk about the electric cost itself, but we also have transmission costs and capacity or infrastructure costs as well. That all goes into the total price. In this particular case, you'll notice that in the motion, the first of these two motions, we're talking about a price of about 12 cents, I think this is the first one, 12 cents per kilowatt hour. The reason that that's higher than where we are now is because the state has introduced a number of new taxes on electrical, electricity consumption. So the price is going to go up, but we're at the tail end of our 18-month agreement right now anyway. So we have to do something else. So the first of the electricity motions is to look at, to go out to auction for all-in, the cost of electricity, transmission, and capacity. The issue there is that the transmission cost is heavily dependent on PSENG because they're the ones who get us, the, you deliver the service to us, deliver the electricity to us. As I mentioned in my message to you, to the board earlier today, PSENG has the highest and most erratic transmission pricing in the industry. So that when we go out for an all-in auction, the bidders are factoring in a significant risk premium on working with PSENG for transmission. So, you know, of course, we would have to pay that. The other option is the second electrical motion that you see, which is number five. And that's just going out to bid for the gas, I'm sorry, for the electric itself. The other transmission costs and the, and the capacity costs will be dependent on the market rate at that point. Capacity costs, we know what those rates are until 2022, so that's already locked in, so there's no risk there. The transmission cost is locked in on a six-to-12-month basis. It is locked in for the rest of the year. But we would be paying the market rate and not that premium for the risk of working through PSENG. So we have two different auctions, they're both scheduled for, all three of them actually are scheduled for Wednesday of this week. We don't have to do anything if we don't get something advantageous to us. We can go with any of the pricing on the all-in auction for the electric or we can go with any of the pricing for the electric-only pricing auction. So either way, this is a win-win for the district, for the board. But we're going to pursue it and see how it all, how it all plays out. But I know there's a lot of information I just gave you, certainly if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Think you could take it off screen, Chair? There you go, all right. Thank you, appreciate the explanation. Are there any questions and comments by board members? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Healy, are you moving those forward?
Yes, I'd like to move these five resolutions for approval.
Great, we have a second. All right, Mr. Sprayberry is seconded, any last comments or questions?
And the board, I just want to, you know, that information that, Mr. Kelly, I don't want to lose sight of the renewal for three years of the Bulldog Academy with the library. It's a program that.
Sorry, Jack, can you speak up?
I'm sorry, the renewal of the Bulldog Academy with the library, I want to just make note of that. Certainly, we appreciate the library in partnering with us. But we also are very proud of that program and how it's grown. So we'll be able to continue for three more years and I'm sure many years beyond as well.
And I'd like to mention something about motion number two, which is McCabe Environmental. We have worked with them for many years on asbestos monitoring and testing. They have been a great partner to us. We did ask for several quotes on this, they came in with the best price. They are a local company in Rutherford. And they have tremendous experience with the district, so this is, this is a real win.
Okay, thank you. So we had a first and a second motion, any other comments or questions? Right, hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Kelly to please take a roll.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Sprayberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to old business. Is there any old business anyone would like to bring up?
Actually, Dr. Alati, I have one item.
Okay, Ms. Early?
And it is, the New Jersey School Board delicate assembly was pushed back from. And it, it is, the New Jersey School Board Delicate Assembly was pushed back from May to June 27. And at that point, if it cannot be held, I guess in person, they'll, they'll convert it into a virtual meeting. So that was the latest on that.
Thank you. I know there's a, a conference, I believe, that's held every year in October as well. And NJFBA announced today that they're going to make that remote as well. I know Mr. Jones is always trying to get people to go with her through it. So there's no, that's why some of us shouldn't be doing that remotely in October. Any other old business? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to Legislative Update. Mr. Conti?
Yeah, I have one item for tonight. What's interesting is there's a bill currently working its way through legislature. And it's a proposal to, due to the current public health state of emergency, it's an idea of a three-year bridge year pilot program. And what the point of it would be, it'd allow students who graduated or graduating classes of 2021 to the graduating class of 2022 who lost time in engaging educational and extracurricular activities in sports programs to be able to still be able to play a fall, excuse me, a winter or spring sport. Obviously, there are some caveats with that, provided that they are in taking some classes at a community college and there's some age restrictions as well. And it does not include fall sports at this time. But there, it's, it's working its way and has a very distinct possibility of being passed.
Got a comment on that?
Yeah.
That bill has been, that bill has been universally opposed by most of the athletic directors and coaches and principals and superintendents. And the NJSEA is not thrilled with it either. Number of reasons, but just quick, frankly, it's not, it's for spring sports now, just spring sports, because that's the season that was lost. It could be, no one thought about what's going to happen if fall sports are lost. And you have a kid in college playing football against a sophomore in high school. No one thought about displacing kids who are freshmen or sophomores by kids who are in college. No one's addressed how academic eligibility or code of conduct regulations would be applied. So I don't know where that bill is going, but it wasn't met with open arms.
There's also, there's also been some issues with the NCAA as well, as far as eligibility and stuff. But we'll see. It's made it through several committees, so.
The fact that all those folks opposed it doesn't mean it's not going to pass. Okay? In fact, it might be the reason it does pass. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not going to pass. I'm just saying there's a lot of reasons. Yeah, I've said this before many, many, many times. It goes back to what we said about graduation and about virtual learning and about how we're going to open schools next year. These decisions often get made from good intentioned people who never ask teachers or principals or superintendents or what their thoughts are. And, you know, I think there could be a way to come up with something maybe better than what the bill is, but we'll see. I think we do have to watch it. Again, how many kids are going to take advantage of it? It would mean forego, it would mean they'd have to forego going to the college of their choice, more than a community college to participate in a spring sport or other activity. It would apply to spring concerts, spring plays and the like. We'll see.
Mr. Conti, what's the bill number on that? Do you know?
It is Bill S2383.
Thank you.
For you, anything.
All right, thank you, Mr. Conti. So now at 9:24 PM, we're going to open up the meeting to the public for any agenda or non-agenda related items. Do we have anyone who would like to make a comment at this time?
I'm going to unmute everybody, so.
Sergio, I'm trying to get the video on. This is Lena Anderson. Can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you and I have confirmation.
Okay.
Here we go. There we go.
I think we got, do we have video?
We have video.
So, good evening. My name is Lena Anderson, 16 Hobart Ave. I just had a question about the grading for this last quarter. Is there any consideration being given to sort of the change in platform and the kids that aren't adapting as well to the online learning? I know some districts are doing a pass fail or some are doing, I guess grading can't go lower for this quarter than it did for the quarter before. And I guess my question is, has a school, you know, has any discussion been, has there been any discussion about the possibility of that, especially with the younger kids that I think maybe aren't as well versed with sort of doing all of their work online as opposed to the older kids who've had maybe some more experience with it?
Grades K to three are going to change the standard based reporting. Currently, numerical, using prepared talk, but I think it's one to four right now. It could be one to three. Whether they meet the standard, exceed the standard or approach the standard to trimester they're on, because it's a whole different world at that level, is going to say that they have the standards covered. It's going to be different language. Another reason for that is much of the assessment of a student in grades K to three is based on teacher direct observation, DRAs, which cannot be given online. You can't tell that somebody's a dependent reader when they're at home reading. So they have to change. Grades four to 12, we spent a considerable amount of time with administrators and supervisors and the teachers as well. We're not going to change the grading system. We think there's some value in the pass fail. In the pass fail, what we have worked on with our teachers and the principals and administrators and the supervisors are working with them, and we've had conversation, is about empathy, understanding, common sense in terms of assessment. So to answer your question, yes, a lot of time is spent discussing some reading. We're making a modification on the two, three level because of the nature of that. We're going to stay the way it is because many of the pros and cons seem that way. But we are encouraging common sense. And, and we are working with folks on that. I understand 200 people. Not everybody's going to follow logic, but we are working on it and we're going to see.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. At 9:28, we're going to close comments to the public. And I believe there is no need for an executive session. Is that right, Mr. Hurley?
Correct.
Okay, so then with that, I will need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Oh, buddy? Okay. We got Ms. Jones. Second, second from Mr. Mazone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Okay, adjourned. I just want to say thank you to the audience, everyone who came this evening for hanging in there with us this whole time. Really appreciate having you all here this evening.
Sorry, everybody.
Have a good evening.